Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's Citrus Heights City Council meeting. Today is Thursday, March the 14th, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Brett Daniels to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey?
Present.
And Mayor Bruins?
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. This meeting replays on Sunday, March 17th at 9:00 a.m. and again on Monday, March 18th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay. Any questions on the agenda?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Carrie's next item.
Next item is presentation number four, Tree Photo Contest Awards.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division here tonight. Happy to talk to you about trees and present to you and show you some beautiful tree photos that we've received over the past few months. I just kind of want to recap as what we've done about trees over this past year and why we're here. Kind of 2018 was the year of the tree. We took some extra steps to protect our urban tree canopy. One of our initiatives is we provided an arborist service to visit people's homes to provide them direction on trees they may have on the property they have questions about and try to give them direction and preserve the tree so they just don't go take them out. And so Lori Murphy is here tonight. She represents Davy Tree, and she's been our on-call arborist and has done a great job. She's visited over 70 of our residential homes and provided them guidance. We did, as you recall, adopt a street tree ordinance to preserve our city trees. We did file our application for the Tree City USA designation. We're still waiting to hear from that. We did a social media campaign, Tree Thursday, so every Thursday for a few weeks posted many of the trees that you're going to see tonight, along with trees around the city, just to kind of keep top-of-mind awareness of our beautiful trees. As you recall and as you know, my favorite stat is we do have more trees than the city of Sacramento, who touts themselves as the city of trees. So then we did our tree photo contest, ran from October to January 31st. And then we do have a celebration coming up of Arbor Day, which is April 6th. So I'm going to take a moment to talk about that, to get that awareness out before I go into the tree photos. So Saturday, April 6th, I hope you'll have it on your calendar, and we're inviting everyone to attend. Nine de Noom, just up the street at Van Marren Park. We're going to be planting 72 trees within the park. These trees are donated from WAC communities, and their mitigation measure is so when development occurs and they need to remove trees, we do require them to repay us in trees. And so these trees are being provided from WAC communities who's developing the subdivision Antelope Road. So we will be enhancing Van Marren Park and providing a lot of shade, new shade up there. We're going to have a logging truck and a bucket truck there for demonstration for the kids. And so we do need volunteers to come out and bring their energy and help us dig holes and plant trees. The email's up there if you'd like to volunteer. Email us or just give us a call. We'll add you to the list. So the tree photo contest, as I mentioned, it opened in October, and we titled it through Facebook. We put it on the website and had flyers around, just asking people to snap a photo or send us a photo of an old tree from their family or something like that, provide us some history in our community to recognize our beautiful tree canopy. That period, we received 44 entries between that period. When we received the entries, when the contest period ended, we printed out all the photos and decorated our office, and it looked really beautiful. We had 44 photos, and so we asked staff to go through and select their top three. And so everybody selected three, and we narrowed it down to 25 photos. We took those 25 photos and put them on Facebook and asked our community to help us vote and looked at the likes, as you may call that, on Facebook. And between the staff selection and the top likes, we have narrowed it down to 10 photos that I want to show you tonight. Happy to say that three of the five photographers that won are here tonight. We'll be presenting them with their little gift certificate. And so we have 10 photos. There's two categories, solid roots, new growth was the category. So each photo was put into a category of which one it represented. In our solid roots category, we have Nolly Singh, who's here tonight. This was her photo. I think we know this is Rush Park. Nolly Singh also had this beautiful photo of the trees and the bridge. And Jim Cunningham is also here tonight, and this oak tree in black and white. And Jim also with the sunset in the background. And then our number one photo in that category by Jim, this photo actually got the most likes of any of the photos, this beautiful back sunset with the oak tree off to the side. That's our top five photos in that category. And in the new growth section, Tanya Wagner's of the fall leaves. Kristin Watson of the raindrops through the tree. Jeff Ruber's tree, this is the field at Mesa Verde. He's actually a coach at Mesa Verde. He's not here tonight as our game was running long, but this was a great photo. Jim's photo of the palm trees that everybody thought, no one believed this was taken here. And then the top photo in the new growth was the young tree in front of all those old oak trees. So those are our top 10 photos. I have a couple honorable mentions. There was some rules with the contest, and as you can guess, this one was taken by an employee. Officer Taylor took this one, so she wasn't able to win, but this was a very big vote getter as well. And this resident took this of Sebar C. Park on her morning walk, but she didn't want to enter the contest. She just wanted to share her photo. We thought it was a great photo. So I'd like to call the photographers up and then present them with their certificate or with their gift certificate. Nolly Singh, come up there. Jim Cunningham. Tanya Wagner.
So Allison, you're giving them a gift certificate, a card for what?
Lowe's. Lowe's gift certificate, $25. Jim got $50 for his two photos being the top.
Tanya, I'll give you my list. I won't use the whole card.
Kristin Watson is here. I'm very sorry about that. I didn't know she was here. So she's here as well.
Well, just, I just want to say while you're getting your picture taken.
There you go.
Face the camera.
It's like, it's all about timing. Here's your fifth one. Allison, here's your last one. Jeff Ruber.
Okay, they're all in here.
Yeah.
Did you already spin his? Oh, no. You got it.
I just want to say while you're getting your picture taken, what a beautiful job you all did. Thank you for this and for the time you took. And our trees really are one of our greatest treasures in Citrus Heights, and I think we all appreciate the beautiful artwork involved in your photography. So thank you. Let's give them a hand. All right.
So I did want to recognize Jeff Ruber, who's here, Coach Ruber from Mesa Verde. He came in. And Kristin, who I didn't know was here either, so sorry, I didn't know that you guys were here. So all five photographers were here. So we do want to thank them. They all are asking for this again, so hopefully we'll do a spring contest for photos. This was a winter time, and so maybe one for spring or summer again. So thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Middleton.
So this weekend, this past weekend, we went to the California Police Chiefs Association, and we got to see our wonderful, amazing chief be installed as the president. It was a very, very moving ceremony. I enjoyed it. It was great to see our honor guard, who were in their best, and they were very sharp, and I was very proud to sit there and watch that installation. I had a cable commission meeting, but I couldn't attend, so Mr. Miller filled in for me. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
And that's my update.
Thank you. All right, Steve, I'll just carry on with you.
Well, and what Councilmember Middleton failed to notice, I thought it was on. Check. Am I okay? Councilmember Middleton took her first train ride. Jeff, her and I went, took the train to Santa Clara for the chief's swearing-in as president, and Jeannie, we went by car. It was a great event and a very quick turnaround, but an enjoyable weekend. Last Thursday at the Metro Cable TV Commission, one of the most notable items is the commission voted to fund the Cowper's unfunded liability. Now, they only have eight employees, but with the possible sunset of the commission in December of 2024, over the next four years, they'll be, we'll be funding that unfunded liability. So hopefully, if we didn't, the member agencies, if, once that was disbanded, would be on the hook for their share of that unfunded liability. So that's good news. Monday, Jeff and I met as the Finance Committee with staff regarding the 1819 budget projections, and you'll be hearing about that. That's not tonight. That's future council meeting. You'll be, the rest of the council will be updated. That night, Monday night, at Regional Transit, the major topic of discussion was the city of Sacramento wanting to put a homeless triage center at the Foreign Road light rail. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of testimony on that, but really, the item was tabled until the FTA weighs in. Since they helped fund the light rail station, they have a say-so on what goes on there. So stand by for news. And today, attended the STA meeting, which is the Sacramento Transit Authority, Transportation Authority. And we heard from staff members of Elk Grove, Folsom, and Ranch Codova in the capital southeast corridor about their unmet transportation needs, and the rest of the jurisdictions will be rotating over the next couple of months with their unmet needs. I believe Citrus Heights will be resending at the meeting, and don't quote me, I think it's April 19th is the next meeting, but I could be off by a few days. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. Nothing from the past, but looking into the future. Saturday is the 10th Annual Spaghetti Dinner for the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band. So if you haven't gotten a ticket yet, I don't know if there's any remaining, but hopefully there is. A fun event and good food and a good cause. So if you are looking for something to do Saturday night, a hot date or something, that's the place to be. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Slowey.
Thank you. So back on the second, Councilmember Middleton and Councilmember Miller and myself were at the grand opening of Ben's Bark Place, an upscale, all-natural pet food store. Have to say, I got plenty of free samples. My dogs loved them. However, organic pet food's a little more expensive than regular, so when the samples were gone, they went back to their cheap stuff, and I'm okay with that. Three on the seventh went to Secog. One of the items, as the Transportation Committee, we recommended to the full board, was the regional ATP funding. There's only seven awards going out this year. Citrus Heights is slated for one, for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two, $1.5 million. That actually goes before the board for a final approval on the 27th, 28th, something like that. I too just wanted to echo the, you know, the comments earlier about the swearing-in in Santa Clara. You know, kudos to the chief. He looked good, but big kudos to our honor guard. They looked pretty sharp. There were 12 of them there, and with their new uniforms, just did the city proud. So special thanks to them. Again, Steve mentioned the Finance Committee, so I won't. Yesterday, Council, yesterday or Tuesday, fire two-by-two. Is that yesterday? This week. How about that? This week, Councilmember and myself and staff met with SAC Metro Fire in our two-by-two. And I have to tell you, we have a great working relationship with SAC Metro. You know, interesting when you see their numbers on the calls for service in Citrus Heights. And there were between 4,300 and 5,000 calls, not fire, that's just medical to, within Citrus Heights. So that definitely tells me we're an aging population, because I'm sure a lot of that wasn't just Crippen Falls, it was other things. But if you think about it, you know, 4,500 calls, ambulance calls within the city, that is a, that's busy. So kudos to them. And Brett covered the spaghetti feed, so I'm good.
Okay. Okay, I'll wrap up. I have a plaque to present to the city from the Firefighters Burn Institute, from Fill the Boot, which was a few weeks ago. I've had this plaque, but it's been sitting in my desk at home, so finally made it here. That was a great event. I think they raised over $150,000 that weekend, which is, thank you to the public for contributing to that. I want to say thank you to staff, to Rhonda Sherman's staff. In December, I joined Area 10 for their Christmas meeting at the Sylvan Community Center, and they always have a wishing well, and people put little cards in there with wishes. And one of the wishes was that some pictures would be hung in that center, because the walls were all bare, and we had pictures everywhere else on city property, and so they now have pictures hanging on those walls. They're classic, old historical pictures, nicely framed, so I just want to thank staff for getting that taken care of. And then yesterday, we did have a Regional Sanitation Board meeting, but everything was pretty much consent, so there's nothing too exciting, or there's actually nothing exciting to report from that meeting. And then today, however, I was at the Sunrise Marketplace Board meeting, and Travis Kimball is the new president. He is the manager of the Quick Quack Car Wash on Greenback Lane. And it was a rather lively meeting. Officer, Sergeant Evans gave a report from the Police Department. There was a lot of discussion about the median palm tree lighting project. And then, great anticipation for their June 8th Brews and Brews in the Burbs celebration. And that's going to be a really nice event. They have already 10 breweries and two distributors that have committed to this event, and we're hoping that it could be, become an annual event. So that's looking really promising. And the final report was on electric cars charging stations. There is a company called ABS Contractors that install charging stations for electric cars, and it's a quick charge. In 30 minutes, you can get your car fully charged. So they're just looking for businesses, actually, that are in good prime locations that would consider being a spot for that. And that is all I have. So thank you. Next, excuse me, item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to shorten her length in the allotted time.
Thank you. I only have one speaker sheet. If anybody else wants to speak, now would be the time to fill one out and give it to our city clerk. I will call Arthur Ketterling forward, please.
Thank you, Council. Martha Ketterling, I was wanting to mention one thing. I don't know if Mr. Miller knows it or not, but I understand that they're going to have, maybe, there's no date really set for it, but I know that there's plans for it for Smart Ride in the South area. And I asked one of the planners at RT here, not at this last meeting, Monday night, but on the 25th of February, I was asking. And I asked them if they still have the plans for Smart Ride on Saturday, and they said yes, they're getting ready to speak with Micro Transit about that. And I was wanting to call your attention, if council can, by speaking with RT, or in between you, between RT and you and Micro Transit, to maybe have a Saturday service. And also, I understand that the bus changes, I don't know if Mr. Miller's not, is aware of it yet, but I read in a paper that they were handing out that with information about the routes and route changes and all, that they postponed it from June to September. And that was the last report I heard, and I was just wanting to comment on the, basically, on Smart Ride. And I know there's people that I spoke to in general, and that they're looking forward to have that. And I know that there had been plans for Smart Ride to be on the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
Arthur, I can't speak to the weekend yet. I don't know that that's certain, but they are adding Smart Ride to different areas.
Right.
Including the Pocket Area, Gerber. I believe there's a Smart Ride going to go downtown.
In the South area, from what I understand.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of media about this, and there isn't a date certain yet for all the changes.
No, I know there isn't.
But major changes are going our way, and I've asked that RT come here before that happens and let us know. So I think by the time it happens, we will know more than we care to know about transit.
Yeah.
It'll be a good thing.
All right.
Thank you, Arthur.
I did want to mention that about Smart Ride itself, though.
Yeah, a lot of changes coming.
Oh, I know that. That's true. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Thank you. Okay, no other speakers. That's all we have for this evening, so we'll go on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar, items five and six.
Do we have any questions on consent?
Move the item.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Carrie's. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number seven, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on Program Year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funds. And the recommendation is to open the public hearing and approve a resolution approving the Consolidated Annual Evaluation Report.
So Agenda Item 7 is an annual report, and it's related to one of the many programs that are funded by our city. One of those programs relates to my employer, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and because SSH is a source of income to me, and because of the potential conflict of interest, I will recuse myself from Agenda Item 7.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Council, Stephanie Carter, Community Development Department. This is our annual CDPG report, and that stands for the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER. And CDPG, as a reminder, is the Community Development Block Grant Program. So it's our federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, excuse me. And this report is assessing the city's progress toward carrying out our annual goals, as well as our five-year goals in our consolidated plan. As with all of our CDPG programs, we welcome public participation throughout the process. Our draft CAPER has a public review period. We posted the CAPER online and in different locations around the city, and it was available for a public comment from February 27th, and the public comment period actually closes today after the public hearing is closed. We posted the notice in the Sacramento Bee, and we will incorporate all of the comments that we receive into the final report before we submit it to HUD. For the program year 2018, we received a total of about $767,000 in CDPG revenue. This includes our annual grant of $696,000, which fluctuates year to year. That's not our standard annual. It's higher than we've received in previous years, and $70,000 worth of loan repayments that we loaned out in previous years. In 2018, there were a total of about $728,000 in expenditures, and this is from a variety of programs, including the Accessibility Project, which is the highest expenditure there. We also spent about $94,000 in our housing repair program. $86,000 was spent toward public services and $140,000 toward planning and administration. So our progress report for our annual goals, we made just about all of our goals. We exceeded our housing program goals. We served 33 households this year. Capital improvements and public services also served a large number of people, for a total of over 20,000 households/persons, because the units are a little bit different depending on what the program is. These are all of our public service recipients. The council allocates funding for public services to nonprofits to carry out these activities, and in total, they served over 7,700 people last year. To highlight some of our programs, we have the Single Family Housing Repair Program. We provide low-interest loans up to $60,000, and the interest is low. Common repairs include everything from a new roof, heating, plumbing, and electrical. These are really necessary life safety improvements, and people are very excited to receive these We also had a mobile home repair program. That was part of a special grant we've received from the state. Last year, we completed a total of 29 mobile home repair loans. These were loans up to $25,000, and the repairs are similar to those with our single family, but their scale is a little bit less because of the nature of the home. As part of our annual accessibility improvement project, the General Services Department utilized our CDPG funding to make a number of accessibility improvements at 21 locations throughout the city. This includes improvements to the curb ramps and infilling sidewalk. If there are broken pieces of sidewalk, it'll replace those. So unless you have any questions, I would like to remind you that this is a public hearing, and then the second action would be a vote to adopt the CAPER and submit it to HUD. So do you have any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing for the public. If anybody would like to comment, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for council comments or a motion.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt a resolution approving the Consolidated Annual Evaluation Report for the year 2018.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Carrie's, and thank you, Stephanie. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing number eight. The subject is Public Hearing Number Two regarding the composition of the city's voting districts pursuant to Elections Code Section 10010A1 of the California Voting Rights Act. And the recommendation is to hold a public hearing, receive input on the composition and number of voting districts, and request any additional information before our next public hearing on May 23rd.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Kathryn Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, we're here to conduct the second of five public hearings required by statute for our redistricting process. The calendar that you see before you is the public hearings that we've scheduled for this meeting. As a refresher, there are two public hearings that we will conduct at the beginning of the project that are simply to introduce the public to the districting process, to orient them to how they can get involved before any maps are drawn. Tonight is the second of those two hearings. After that, our consultant, NDC, will prepare a draft map that will be for review for the public on May 23rd, and then consider it a second time on June 13th. And these maps will be finalized with a second reading And these maps will be finalized with a second reading of an ordinance on June 27th. These are what we like to call our must-dos and our goals for districting. Our must-dos are on the left, and they are constrained by both federal and state law. There are requirements to divide districts by equal population, as well as to ensure that federally protected classes are not, well, are still given their voice in the districting process in the drawing of the lines. And also, federal law requires that there is no racial gerrymandering in the drawing of these lines. On the right-hand side, you'll see the goals for districting. In districting, there's going to be a compromise between these different policy objectives. Objectives can be things like making sure that districts are contiguous, preserving community of interest, and also dividing districts by visual boundaries, whether they be natural or artificial. This is a demographic summary of the city of Citrus Heights, total population being approximately 83,000, which means that the districts will be split up into sections of approximately 16,000 people. That variation can vary by no more than 10% in either direction between districts. But that would be the main goal, to divide them by population, but other factors can be considered, such as the balance of federally protected classes that you see in this chart before you, voter registration, voter turnout, demographics of that nature. This is an example of a map that our consultant has drawn showing Latino concentration in the city of Citrus Heights. There is a slight concentration in the area northwest of I-80, but there is no large geographic concentration of any protected class. This shows the concentration in the city of Citrus Heights of Asian-American eligible voters. And I should say that all of these maps are, demonstrate the concentration of people of eligible voting age. This isn't necessarily registered voters. This is people over the 18, over the age of 18 that are eligible to vote. And so we have one area of concentration that you see here on the map of our Asian-American This is our area of concentration of our African-American residents in the southwest of the city. You see there in the corner in blue. But again, there's no large geographic concentrations that would constitute an entire district, but we will still consider this in our districting process. These are the main questions for tonight, that the purpose of this hearing is to gain community input on these main points before maps are drawn. First question would be, what is your neighborhood or community of interest? There are type of things that residents can think of when they think about a district that's being drawn, such as school registration. Where do children go to school in that community of interest? Are there shared views or problems or characteristics about a certain area that the city should know about prior to drawing these maps? The second question is, does a community of interest want to be united in one district or divided to have a voice in multiple elections? So that's the idea of either a community of interest can be contained in one district to have that unified voice, or the line can divide a community of interest, and that community can therefore have two representatives that are interested in the challenges facing These are possible factors that can go into drawing and articulating a community of interest, such as school attendance areas, natural dividing lines, such as highway or roads, creeks, our canal, our hills. Those sort of national, natural geographic boundaries can play into drawing these lines. Area around, areas around parks can also be considered, or any legislative or election concerns can also be considered. These are some sample maps that our consultant has provided us. This is an example of a compact map. These are both drawn mainly on geographic boundaries rather than policy concerns. And so you can see the compact nature. They aren't spread really across the city. That would be an example of, of that sort of map. This is more of a policy-driven map. As you can see up on the left-hand corner, Colorado Boulevard in Pasadena. This map was drawn so that each district in this community touched Colorado Boulevard, which was a main area that the city wanted to redevelop. And so the idea was that each elected official had a say in Colorado Boulevard. It's similar to what happened with the Central Unified School District on your right-hand side and South Pasadena. The city and its consultant have prepared public participation kits for residents to draw maps. These are all available on our website at citrusheights.net for download. There's an option, residents can either fill out a paper-drawn map with the information that's available on our website. They can also use a handy Excel tool that our consultant has created. They're both available for download. Population units are combined census block groups. And so these population units can be divided into smaller units with the help of our consultants if needed. These are the paper and Excel options that we've discussed. They're available for download on the website. They also get into a little bit more detail regarding city demographics, especially the Excel file. You can open that up. You can create a district, and the tool will auto-calculate for you how, how balanced your district is, both by population and by, by protected class and other factors.
We have a question.
Yes.
One thing I noticed, because I was curious and started playing around with the spreadsheet, and up on the, where it summarizes whether you're plus or minus for each of the districts, it's not wide enough, and you just get the, the pound sign at times if you've got, if the number won't fit in the cell.
Oh, sure. We can, we can fix that.
Thank you.
These are the main three questions that can serve to guide our public hearing tonight. Speakers should not feel constrained to these questions. Rather, they're just to start conversation and are helpful points of feedback for a consultant when they prepare the maps. We will conduct this hearing tonight, and we'll reconvene with the third public hearing on May 23rd. At that meeting, maps will be considered. We ask the public to submit any maps that they'd like seen on May 23rd, no later than May 13th, because our consultant needs a little bit of time to format the maps in a universal manner so that they all look the same. And so we ask the deadline for the public participation be no later than May 13th, and we can ensure if anything is submitted prior to that date, it will be included at that public hearing. And so with that, I'm available for any questions, as is our city attorney.
Okay. Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, does anybody on the council have a question for her? Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. This is your opportunity from the public to come forward and make any comments on this or ask any questions. Okay. Nobody's coming, so I'm going to close the public hearing. It is closed. And then, any other, any comments from counsel?
Just curious if we've gotten any maps in yet?
We have not yet.
Thank you.
Okay. So this, that's, yes, oh, Brett, sorry.
We're not looking to expand Citrus Heights anywhere, really, but are we considering, or at least keeping open the idea, that Roseville Point may need to be included in our numbers as potential growth up on the northwest side?
We can do that. We're going to work through with our consultants the sort of projections that we would need to do. We're at an, we didn't get into this too much with our presentation, but we're at a little bit of an awkward timing in that we will have to reconsider these districts once new census data comes out in a year. And so we know that we're going to have to relook at all of, relook at all of this once that comes out. That can be part of the consideration as well, any anticipated population fluxes. We will add that into the consideration.
Question in regard to that, then, but doesn't, that would require an annexation. That's not just picking up a...
That's correct. The planned growth that I know is one of the bullets that Kathryn came, had up there is planned growth within the city's existing boundaries. If we're talking about annexations like Roseville Point, that is really a different issue. We wouldn't consider at, at this point, population that would be part of a potential or future annexation. After an annexation, then we might have to switch, you know, rejuggle lines again.
That's a great point, though, and I think it would, it occurred to me in going through this, that it would be easier to do an annexation, having districts, rather than bringing in this, well, let's say we annex all around Orange Vale. At-large wouldn't work.
Well, let me just address that. You know, several years ago, we were getting a lot of interest from the folks at Roseville Point to be annexed into Citrus Heights, because that development didn't exist when our boundaries were drawn during the incorporation effort. And that community, which is on the far eastern side, or western side of Citrus Heights, has a Citrus Heights address, but they are in the county of Sacramento. They are not within city limits. So at that time, we did a feasibility study, rather, very extensive feasibility study on whether or not it would be to the advantage of our current citizens and residents to annex in that part of the community, of the, of the county. And at that time, the decision, or the, the result of that study was that Roseville Point would bring no economic advantage to our city, because there's no property tax that we could collect because of, of revenue neutrality. There's no sales tax that would be generated for, to, to pay for the additional services we'd have to provide to them. So it would, in fact, be a drain on our city, and would cause us to reduce potentially services to the rest of our community, to service that community. So based on that information, the decision was made at that time that we would not move forward with it. And unless something's changed, I don't think those facts change until we get our property tax back. And that might change the scene, the whole issue on that. But right now, it would cost us money to, to incorporate that area into our city limits, and it would take the resources we have now and cause us to spread them even thinner. So as I, just to bring you up to speed on why that property is not part of Citrus Heights. Something to consider for the future, though.
It's coming up.
Yeah.
For three years.
Yeah, absolutely. And when we, you know, at that point, too, you know, we'll have a, not only will we have our, our property tax, but we will have gone through a, another census. And so things may kind of come together in a, kind of a critical mass. But at this point in time, it's not under consideration for our districting, so, okay. All right. So this was a public hearing. Do we have any action on this item at this point? Let's see. Okay, so we have held a second public hearing on this, and we've requested additional information, and so we just encourage the public to continue to respond to the information that's on our city website. Contact Kathryn if you have any questions that you need answered verbally, and we'll continue to move forward in this process. Okay, thank you. All right. So absent anything else, that will close our public hearing portion of the agenda, and we'll go into our regular calendar.
So with regular calendar, the next item, number nine. The subject is General Plan Annual Progress Report for 2018. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution accepting the General Plan Annual Progress
Good evening, counsel. Allison Bermudez, again with the Planning Division. Here tonight is just our annual report that we do on our general plan. Our general plan, as you know, outlines several goals and policies for the city's development over, through a 20-year period. And so the state wants to know what we're doing, and they want to know how we're doing it and how we're progressing through that. So we must file this annual report to two different state agencies, one being the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. They want to know in our general plan, decisions that we've made and how we're progressing towards those goals. And then HCD, or Housing and Community Development, they want to know what we're doing on housing and how we're addressing our RENA numbers, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation numbers that they provided us that tells us how many housing units we need to be able to provide for. This is becoming a more important report each year, as now grants are tied to completing this report. And filing it appropriately, you're automatically eliminated from applicant, grant applications if you have not done this. So fortunately, we have done this, and this will be our 2018 report that we'll be filing. I did want to go over a little bit what was contained in your report. It did highlight our general plan actions and policies that we've made significant accomplishments, accomplishments on this past year. Listed in there was the complete streets of Sunrise Boulevard, which was a major improvement, additional safe routes to schools, and the advancement of our continued trail network that were, that was a goal. We think about this general plan was created in 2000, and this network, trail network was a vision at that time, and so we are progressing through that. So we like to recognize that in this annual report. Included in there is also a series of tables. Tables, they're up to Tables A through F now, and each table with different information on our housing. And Table A, which is a significant one in the report that goes to HCD, wants to know how many housing applications we've received, how many units we've approved, and the income level of the residents of those protected units. So these are housing entitlements, and so these are projects that have come through the Planning Department that need an entitlement. In 2018, we received four applications, which totaled 356 units. So that's a very significant progress that we made last year. Country Lane was a plan home project of seven units. Mitchell Farms, which is 260 units. The Sunrise Point Project, 47 units. Bear Paw Town Homes, 42 units, again totaling 356 units of applications that were received last year. 302 of those units were approved, and it doesn't say 356, because two of those projects were not approved until January of 2019. So they'll reflect in next year's report. And three, those 302 units, we all classify those of AM, of a average middle income or medium income level. They're all going to be market rate type units. Next year, when we see this report, we'll see some lower income units will be provided with that Sunrise Point project. They want to know what we're doing in building permits for housing. So last year in 20, in 2018, we issued 21 permits for new house, for new homes. Seventeen of those were our above median income, so our single, traditional single-family homes, market rate homes. We had four very low-income units. So those are the ADUs or the accessory dwelling units, granny flats, we might have called them in the past. Those, we can attribute to the very low income. And we do, we get a application for a building permit for a new home. We do have the applicant complete a form, a questionnaire. We want to know who's going to live there. If it's an ADU, are you going to rent it out? Is it for a family member? So that's how we're able to attribute this income level data to these that we must report. So of the ADU applications we received, all of them are for family members. So there'll be no income collected on those, so that's how we get... that's how we get to attribute them to the very low income level. And we finalized seven housing units last year. That means they went from building permit to occupancy, and seven of those completed in last year. So, these are all additional numbers that the state is asking for, much more detailed than we've had to do in the past. But they're tracking projects from entitlement application to processing to how many we've approved, and then they want to know when it goes to building permit and when that building permit is issued, and they want to know when that building permit is finalized. So, a lot more tracking now on this housing.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
Is this progress report, is this used by the governor to determine? I mean, he's talking about withholding transportation funds tied to not meeting your needs, housing needs. Is this report what they're using, or...
They will be used. I assume he'll be reusing those, these tables that we supply to HCD, these tables A through F, where all this data is collected and submitted to the state. So, this table B, as it's shown on here, really is a compilation of all those permits and what we have done to meet those needs. You know, our RENA numbers are housing needs allocation numbers that we're giving from the years 2013 through 2021. They say you must be able to provide housing, you know, at least have available, and this shows how we're progressing towards that.
And the other item that the governor appears to be looking at is whether you have a certified housing element. And I know some of the, in the case of the city that he sued, they did not have a certified housing element.
And we do.
Yes.
So, we, our Regional Housing Needs number, just to remind you, from 2013 to 2021, we had 587 units that we were allocated that we need to be able to provide for, and we're making significant progress at 109. But next year, this number will go up as quite a bit as Mitchell Farms starts to develop. And this is just some other information they're also looking at. We don't have any properties that we've rezoned to meet housing needs. We don't have any units that we've acquired. But just to give you an idea of the in-depth of information that the state is looking at on addressing the housing crisis. So, this is just different information they're also asking from us. Tonight, we just asked that you move to accept the resolution before you, so we may submit the report to the required agencies. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jeff?
So, taking what Councilmember Miller said a step further, I mean, you know, the governor threatened to hold transportation funding over housing. And, you know, we all know from a RENA number standpoint, it's allocated based on population and, you know, what the state needs. Even with everything that we've got in the hopper, we're not going to get to our 600 number. And quite frankly, after Mitchell Farms is built, that's really the last piece of open land, if you will, that the city has. Everything else is going to be infill and minor steps. So, how do we incorporate into this so it doesn't, you know, suddenly pop out that, you know, we're built out, we're the densest city in the county, and we have very little available land? Because I'd like to, you know, start putting that in, and putting it out there anytime you can in these reports that go there versus all of a sudden, four years from now, say, we don't have any more land. It's like, you know, where'd this come from? So, again, I know they kind of have to follow a set format, but I think it would behoove us if there's any way to put that in there and start saying that again and again and again. It's not going to come as a surprise to them when we get close, but I seriously doubt, you know, we're making good progress, don't get me wrong. But one, I doubt we're going to hit that number. And then, what really concerns me is when the next RENA allocation, we don't have a chance of ever making that. I mean, we just don't have the land.
Right. And just to kind of tell you what's out in the future is we are going to be starting the next cycle for housing elements. So, probably by fall of next year, we will be getting new RENA numbers. And so, it's during that period leading up to when we're getting our new RENA numbers, we try to be very actively involved with CACOG while they're developing that methodology and try to put our case forward the best we can in terms of what our constraints are. And so, yeah, so we will definitely be expressing that as we go through that, our, this next go-round.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, so...
Is this a public hearing now?
No, this is not a public hearing, but we do have a resolution to adopt.
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of the city council to accept the General Plan Annual Progress Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. It carries.
And thank you, Allison. I know the port looks nice, but there's a lot of work that goes on behind it to get it to that, you know?
Thanks very much.
Especially this year, the tables are very complex. If you had, for a couple weeks, walked by our office, she had a huge, like, six-by-six table where she was filling in all the squares. So, it is a lot of work.
Thanks very much. Okay, our next item, please.
Next item, we have a department report, number 10. The subject is an update on small unmanned aircraft systems drone program and the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Partnership.
So, this is what we've all been waiting for, the drone report. No offense to the rest of you, but this was like the highlight of the night.
Thank you, sir.
Although I'm a little disappointed it didn't make its own entrance.
Safety first. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. On behalf of Chief Ron Lawrence, I'm here tonight to give you an update on our city strategic plan goal involving our UAS program and also our partnership with SAC Metro Fire and standing up this awesome program. Before I get started, one of the things that I wanted to just kind of clear up on the terminology is you'll often hear people say either UAS, UAV, or drone. And I just want to clear this up and let you know that those all mean exactly the same thing. Drone is the more common hobbyist term you'll hear, but from a government standpoint and keeping with the professionalism of our program, we refer to it as UAS, which is an unmanned aircraft system or sometimes unmanned aerial system.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing I wanted to point out is that I was having a conversation recently with someone, and they stated that oftentimes in a law enforcement career, groundbreaking technology will come around maybe once or twice. And from the research I've done and all of the benefits and advantages this technology has, I think this is definitely one of those technologies that's going to come around once and end my career. So, definitely wanted to point that out. And I greatly appreciate your support and supporting this program because I think it has robust advantages to officer safety and also saving lives. So, moving right along, our UAS team is comprised of myself, Sergeant Nair, who's our program coordinator, Officer Greg Bohm, Technician Barnett, and Volunteer Mike Rutledge. We're in the process of trying to grow this team, but I want to take a moment and point out the great job that Sergeant Nair has done and also Officer Bohm. He's actually a private pilot. He was going to be here with us tonight, but he got called away to a family matter. But he's actually a private pilot, and he's done an amazing job of helping train our up-and-coming pilots and really helping set the foundation for our program. So, very lucky to have him and the rest of the team. In addition to our four current FAA licensed pilots, we also have 24 who are at some stage of studying for their licensing as well. Our current aircraft consist of two of these DJI Phantom 3s, and we have one DJI Inspire 1 with FLIR capabilities, which is the thermal imaging. The types of deployments that we've either actively engaged with and/or are looking forward to engaging with are, these are just a few of them, but missing persons, observing and monitoring creek for flood status, open field searches for criminal activity, hotspot area checks, which is right in line with our catch crime reduction model, high-risk suspect contacts, traffic collision investigations, rooftop clearing, and training and demonstrations. And there's just a few photos of some of the work that we've done so far. Speaking to our collaboration with SAC Metro Fire, this is the exciting part. Captain Ryan Gifford is a wealth of knowledge. I've been in contact with him, and he actually was one of the founders of the Sacramento Regional Team for these UASs. And I can't say enough good things about Captain Gifford. Just an amazing resource for us. We have a great relationship with him, and I can just see this proliferating into a great relationship with lots of shared ideas and best practices, not only with SAC Metro Fire, but with the other agencies that are listed there. And then, more to come, I'm sure. Obviously, with this large of a group comes with it other advantages, with group discounts and things like that based on volume. And then, obviously, being able to test and evaluate new equipment that come online before they're actually available to the public. So, it's a neat opportunity for us. Future of our UAS program, we're in its infancy right now. There's no question. But our, first and foremost, what we're looking to do is obviously increase the number of licensed pilots we have, and we're actively pursuing that right now. And I see us doing great things with getting new people online. We're also going to continue with our frequent UAS deployments and use them as much as we can to increase officer safety, save lives, and whatever we can find that's within the scope of the program to utilize these to their fullest potential. And then, obviously, continue our outreach with the neighborhood associations and keeping them informed with what we're doing and making sure that they're aware and on board with everything that we've got going with the program. So, with that, do we have any questions or feedback for the program?
Are we going to increase the number of UASs that we have?
Right now, we're extremely fortunate to have the three that we do have. Obviously, as you can imagine, new technology is always coming online. And as you would probably guess, there's new technology out now that gives us some different options. But right now, we're working with what we've got, and we're able to be very effective with the, and feel fortunate to have what we do have with these three.
How often do you use them?
Well, right now, we're a little bit at the mercy of the number of pilots we have on the shifts that we have. But the, I can tell you that the Officer Bohm is our main pilot currently, and he's taking it out. He has it with him at all times when he's on duty. So, he's, has one reason or another that he's able to use it to either provide overwatch on, so that would be maybe on a high-risk traffic stop or on some sort of a high-risk suspect contact, he's able to, or has been able to, get it up and provide kind of an eye in the sky, which is a huge advantage as far as officer safety goes because we have a greater vantage point from an elevated position. And so, to answer your question as far as how often, it varies. But I can tell you, in this short time, we have over just about 50 deployments, and we've been in the air over 10 hours as far as actual airtime. So, it's been used quite frequently.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Yeah. I'm just terribly excited about it, incredibly excited about it. I think this is the greatest thing for officer safety that's come around in just forever. If you're able to tell us, worst-case scenario, the officer's on the northwest side of town and something happens on the southeast side of town, how quickly can they get the drone there?
It's just basically going to be a matter of how fast that pilot can get to the scene. Once it's on scene, this drone, I'd say, once it's set, oh, I wrote my own rule, called it a drone, sorry. This UAS, the way they have it prepared on the vehicle, probably can have it up in less than a minute.
Excellent. Incredible. And I also think that when we look at spending money on these things, the thing that we have to remember, too, is this can shorten a incident remarkably. So, instead of having a full-blown thing where a dozen officers are surrounding a car and then SWAT teams are coming in, and we just don't know what the bad guy's doing in the car, I can just see a drone literally, you know, coming up right to the window. You look inside, and he's incapacitated, and that situation's over. And so, I just hope we can continue to increase this program and be, you know, kind of a showcase city for other cities, too. That's what we do in Citrus Heights. We set the bar. And so, kudos, and just keep it going, keep it moving, and keep us aware of what's going on, too. I'd love to hear about when we get our first story of bad guy caught with a drone. And the other thing is, I can see this as an incredible tool for finding missing children, missing persons. This is just incredible, and so, keep going.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So, just one question. So, Lieutenant Morris, do you have your 107 license?
Of course. Being the leader of the team, I would be a little remiss if I didn't.
I just wanted to make sure. I saw four, and I saw, besides you, four other people. So, just wanted to make sure the top dog over there had one. So, thank you.
I did, and I can, I tell you honestly, it's, I appreciate the level that they want you to aspire to as far as your knowledge base. And it is considered an aircraft in federal airspace, so I do understand all of the difficulty. But, I mean, it's probably 20 hours of self-study, and then you have to go to an FAA licensed site to take the test. So, there's quite a bit to it. So, I, kudos to these officers who are moving forward with getting this.
Right.
Just one more thing.
And I think it's important that we make sure our public trust us in using these. And so, maybe a presentation in the future will also include how we protect people's privacy and stuff like that while using the drones.
Absolutely. It's a great point. Thank you.
That was going to be my follow-up question, too. I know we're governed now by federal regulations. At first, I don't think we were even allowed to use these. And so, I was curious, like barricaded in place or a hostage situation, or even a situation that would take a warrant. I mean, we can't just fly one of these in a window and see what's going on in a house, could we?
No, that's absolutely correct. And we're definitely staying very abreast on case law, which is minimal, but we're looking at some of the helicopter and fixed wing case law that does exist to kind of base some of our guidance. But I can tell you, we're taking a conservative approach to this and to the situations that you just mentioned. Those would definitely be warrant-type situations where it's either going to take a warrant or some sort of extreme exigency. But most of the things that Mr. Daniels was speaking to and that we're doing currently are all public place-type things where there's not an expectation of privacy. So, we're very, very careful to make sure that we're doing things the right way, by the book, which is also why our agency has the COA, which is the Certificate of Authority from the FAA, that kind of encompasses the entire agency. But then individually, we're requiring our pilots to be individually licensed, which is a higher standard. That's the highest standard that you can aspire to with one of these programs. So, we're doing that to make sure that we're by the book and we're being very conservative.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting. Okay, next item.
Our next item is City Manager Items.
Yes, council, just a few updates. Let's see, the first one is we have decided to cancel the next city council meeting on March 28. Two of our members will not be present. So, in consultation with the mayor, we made that decision this week. So, and we were able to move the agenda items that were not time-sensitive to that meeting to April 11th. So, I want everyone to know that. Secondly, I had the chief just pop up for a minute and provide a quick update regarding conversation the council had with us about a memorial at San Juan High School.
Mayor, members of the council, you may recall, some while back, the council requested the city to look into a memorial at San Juan High School. This is regarding the death of Deputy Mark Stisjak, who was killed in the line of duty on September 17 of last year. So, we have been, my staff has been actively representing the city with several groups, the San Juan Unified School District, the high school, as well as the Alumni Association. They've had many active plans. It started out as to be a bench, perhaps, of memorial, and now the plan has evolved into something a little bit different because they've learned that there was actually a second alumni from San Juan who was a peace officer who's also been killed, although that one was not in the line of duty. So, now they're broadening that thinking to have a memorial of public safety officers killed in the line of duty. But where we are in the timeline is that even though we've been having active meetings with this, and it absolutely will happen, I'm convinced of that, is we're at a place in time now where the family is going to be getting involved and making sure that we follow their desires and that they're a part of this, the final decisions. That's been a little bit challenging to get them engaged, but not in a negative way. To put it in context, this only happened six months ago. And for them, they're still grieving. It's still very much painful for them. And in a calendar year, there are a lot of law enforcement agencies that honor peace officers that were killed in the line of duty in the previous year. So, last year, we lost 10 officers in California. And so, those families of the fallen officers are invited to the California Peace Officers Event, which we just had, and then our event was on Tuesday last week. They're invited to the Sheriff's Association event. And then, of course, in May, the big one is the California Peace Officers Memorial. So, my take is that the family is, one, still very grieving, in a very grieving and painful process. But they're also, two, very busy with other organizations and going to these memorials. So, I would ask for your patience on this project. I'm confident that it will happen. And when we do get to that point, I've asked my staff to make sure that we are available to have council have a prominent role. I'd like to have our motor unit involved and our honor guard there as a big presence to that, whatever that event might look like when it does happen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And chief, as you get closer to everybody agreeing on what it was and then figuring out how to pay for it, please keep me in the loop because I know the local Rotary would like to assist in the paying for it of some sort, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And finally, council, our new Economic Development Manager, Megan Huber, has been hard at work. She's jumped in both feet with a number of initiatives in terms of economic development and working with our businesses. And so, I've asked her to share just one piece of the body of work she's been working on with the council and the community tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Megan Huber, Economic Development Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, Megan Huber, Economic Development Manager with the City of Citrus Heights. As most of you know, I am a little over a month into my tenure. As Chris mentioned, I am digging in. One of the first steps in economic development of digging in is data analytics. So taking a look at how our jurisdiction presents statistically and through numbers so we know what our assets are and where we look great, and also what we need to work on and strengthen. So what you have before you is the first step in that analysis and also one of our first official marketing pieces. For members of our audience, there's also a small stack at the back of the room if you'd like to grab one on your way out. And then it will also be located on our website ASAP for citizens at large. So what you see here is our city infographic, lots of great information. I'm not going to walk you through every single thing, you can enjoy it at your leisure, but I would like to point out the points that are really compelling stories that we're going to be telling. This piece in particular is designed for retail recruitment and retention, so it includes a lot of information that is important to retail property owners, retail brokers, and potential brands. So that's why we focus here on the front page of the city location in relation to the urban core of Sacramento and also the state at large as we're having conversations with folks around the United States and the world. The traffic counts are to the right. A really fabulous story that is told through those traffic counts is our intersection of Sunrise and Greenback is the third highest traffic count area in Sacramento County. So that's really significant for us because that is right where our retail core is. So that speaks to a high-volume foot traffic area, which is really great for potential retail recruitment. On the back page, you will find more information geared towards potential retail business. On the top left is a list of our top five growth industries, and those are categorized by NAICS code. If you're familiar, that is the category that businesses identify when they incorporate themselves. So those are our top five. They can be, the NAICS codes can be a little bit nebulous, so I'd like to give you a few examples of what that looks like to kind of bring it home. When we talk about healthcare and social assistance, those are things like our doctors' offices, our dentists, our chiropractors, our therapists, childcare facilities, senior living, and also nonprofits. So you can see it's a little bit of a larger category than the name implies. The second is accommodation and food services. I don't know about you, but I feel like I can eat somewhere different every day of the year here in Citrus Heights, which is always fun.
Good point.
That's a nice tagline there.
Yeah, well, working on that, too, more to come. The third category is construction. The fourth category is administrative and support and waste management and remediation services. That is the full NAICS code, which gives you an idea of what a grab bag that is, but generally speaking, it is our office functions here within the city. And then the final one, of course, is retail, which is really significant here for us. To the right, we are sure to promote our dynamic business districts, including Sunrise Marketplace, Auburn Boulevard Business Association, and Antelope Crossing Business Association. And then for the remainder of the page are our statistics. So total population of over 88,000 people. Daytime population includes both folks at home and daytime workforce. Total number of housing units is about 35,000, and the story we'd like to tell there is it's fast-growing with our new rooftops coming soon at Mitchell Farms, which is exciting. Our median income, you can see there is currently over $56,000. And most importantly and exciting, it's increasing 13% over the next five years, which is really great to hear. Also, a really powerful statistic for business recruitment purposes. Our median age is 37 and a half. That doesn't tell the whole story, though. Another really great statistic that I found is Citrus Heights has a higher-than-average population of both millennials and retirees than other cities of our size. So that tells me that we're a genuine community, since we can capture everyone. And finally, 32% of our population has some kind of college degree. So you can tell overall, we are a really robust residential and business community, and we're working to create tools and marketing initiatives that promote that and tell that story. So this is the first one that we would like to share with you this evening, and there will be more to come.
Well, thank you very much, Megan. I just want to say she gave this presentation to the Sunrise Marketplace Board today, and they were very excited to see this. And, you know, a month in, kudos to you for coming up with a really fine marketing piece.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo those comments. I was, not that I was reading this during the meeting and not paying attention to other presentations, but very impressed as I was looking through this. So I was going to give you a shout-out, but thanks for coming up and taking the bow. It's a great piece of work.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Okay, the next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Does anybody have anything to offer? Brett?
Sure. Today, I had the opportunity to exit westbound Interstate 80 at Antelope, which I don't go by very often in that direction. And I was blown away by the amount of graffiti on the sound wall on the west side. And I know that's not our wall and things like that, but, you know, Megan's out there working really hard and stuff like that to bring things into the city, and we hope we also capture drive-by traffic of that, you know, 100,000 or whatever that are passing that intersection every day. And if I didn't live here and I exited Antelope to get something to eat, and I looked over and saw that, I would get right back on the freeway and keep on going. And so maybe if, I don't know, if we could maybe make a phone call or two and push some folks to get that cleaned up right away, or I'm just going to go out there and paint it over.
Is that on public or private property?
It's Caltrans.
Was it Caltrans?
Yeah.
Northwest or southwest? Or east? It's four, right?
Well, it's the westbound 80 exit at Antelope, so there's only one exit. And then if you look to your right, to the west...
Jeff, it's close to Vallejo. Inside joke, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Brett.
So you're coming from Rosewood?
Yeah.
Over there by that new car wash.
Yes, yes, exactly right by the new car wash. And so, yeah, if we could make a phone call or two and say, can you please get that taken care of, or if they'd like us to take care of it, or I'll just stop by and get some painted. So I want to ask us to consider something probably very serious. There is a current effort, a very misguided and flawed effort, to change the use-of-force standard in California, AB 392, from reasonable to necessary. For people that, on the outside of law enforcement, that might not sound like a big deal. From the people within the law enforcement arena, they understand how flawed that is and how dangerous that will be. AB 392, if it does continue on and gets passed, will get officers killed. There's no doubt about it, it will get officers killed. And just to show you an extreme maybe of an example, if I point a unloaded gun at you, it is not necessary to defend yourself because I cannot harm you. Okay? And so an officer will have no way of knowing that. He'll have no way of knowing if that's a replica weapon, he'll have no way of knowing if it's a BB gun, whatever. And you could see this going to that point to where officers will end up in prison, they'll end up dead, and this is just a horrible effort to fix something in a wrong approach. And so I would like us to consider a resolution in opposition to AB 392. There have been some cities, Sacramento, who have issued resolutions in support of 392, and I think that does nothing but kick their officers in the teeth directly. So I would like our council to consider a resolution in opposition of 392 and show our officers and our law enforcement heroes throughout this state that we're more concerned about them.
I would actually take that a little further. I would actually support that, but on the flip side, there's a bill proposed, I mean, and be clear, the 392 changes verbiage, and that's really all it does. It doesn't provide any additional training. It replaces reasonable to, with the word necessary. And to me, that is just, in so doing, it's really for the lawyers so they can turn around and sue departments and officers. It's not, changing a word doesn't change behavior, but I do know that the Cal chiefs have proposed, is it 270?
SB 230.
230, where they're actually saying, you know, we get it, but in order to do, to change behavior, we need to train and do other things. And I would say if we're going to oppose one, we should support the other.
I would support that, too.
I concur. Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe at the next...
Yeah, I don't know timing on when those things are coming.
Do you know, chief, the timing on these two bills?
Because if, because if we're going to miss it because we're not going to have a meeting, I would think that we would support a letter from the mayor if, you know, in lieu of a resolution, because we can't do it until April.
Yeah, the AB 392 is supposed to go to Public Safety Committee sometime in late March, maybe early April. SB 230 is slightly behind that one. But I'll definitely get, I can definitely get you more information on the resolution.
So since we're not going to meet till April, would the council support a letter, you know, with all of our names on it going there, in that?
We do that, and, but if we have time...
Right, fair enough.
We could do both, actually. So you could craft a letter that we could all sign, and then if we have time, we'll follow it up with the resolution.
Excellent, thank you.
I think I'm going to sneeze, so let's end this meeting.
I'm good.
I feel it coming. Anything else coming?
Yeah.
Okay, are we all good? Anybody else have anything to offer? Then this meeting is adjourned.